Okay, well, we're at 7:01. Debbie, let's call the meeting to order and please note attendance.
Noted.
Thank you. First up tonight, we have our agenda review. Tonight's meeting has only a few items. Does anybody have any concerns? If not, I would accept the motion to accept the agenda as published.
Jonathan? I move that we accept the agenda as published.
So moved. Looks like Irv is seconding it. Okay, any discussion on the agenda tonight? No, okay. Debbie, would you go ahead and take the vote, please?
Yes, Tom?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Thank you all in favor.
All right. Thanks, everybody. So first up tonight, we've got an update from Scott regarding the reopening plans and kind of all these different moving parts. So you've got the floor.
Great. Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you for putting me up front on the agenda. And I'm going to go ahead and share screen right here. And then I'm going to maneuver this around. Can you all see that?
Yes.
All right. Perfect. And just want to move over this stuff. Okay, well, yes, talk about moving parts. That should be the operative word. Right now, we have the entire central office focused on one thing, and that is reopening schools right now. It's it's taken up 1,000% of our time and energy. And this is, when I say it's a seven day a week job, I really mean that. It's not just me. It's the entire team. So this is the third installment since July 1 of the updates on where we are. And I just want to go over a couple of things real quick because you've heard me use the analogy of turning around the aircraft carrier. But I want to add one, one other piece to that. And that is every time we get new guidance from Oregon Department of Education or any state agency, we have to start the turn all over again. And that's the point I really wanted to bring up that I haven't brought up in the past. And and it's one of the things that causes sometimes an enormous source of frustration on our part because we also know that we're under enormous pressure. Whether to open schools or not open schools, whether to get out specifics or hold, hold back a little bit. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear with the board that every time we get new information, we have to redo 164 items on each of our blueprints. And so tonight, I'm going to go over with you three questions. Again, it's the three questions that have framed all of my presentations to you since we've started on this path. Number one is where exactly are we in the reopening for Silver Falls School District? Number two, what are the major barriers to opening schools? And number three, what are the SFFSD priorities right now? And so before I start on that, I want to be really clear that when we say reopening schools, we do not mean getting back to normal. We are millions of miles away from getting back to normal at this point. When we say reopening schools, what we mean is reopening to in-person instruction in a hybrid model. And starting with a select number of grade level bands first. And so not all K-12 will start at once, and all students that do start will come back in a hybrid model, which means that's only two full days of instruction each week. The other three days are what we would call independent learning activities. And the teachers are actually teaching four full days a week with one day, one full day of plan, plan and prep time and other things, meeting with with their teams. Other things go into that full day. But teachers will not be teaching full time in a hybrid model in addition to comprehensive distance learning. It's it's one or the other, which poses a whole other myriad of issues that need to be solved as well. Staffing wise, one of the questions that I get the most is if there's an outbreak, then what? And the answer I always have to give is, well, it depends. And it depends because there are so many different scenarios in which we can have infected person or an outbreak within a cohort, and it depends on various facts. So there's no way that I could stand here and freestyle with you about the facts. If I don't know exactly what the context of each scenario is, this comes straight out of Ready School Safe Learners from the Oregon Department of Education. I believe this is 13 scenarios right here. And the scenarios are infinite. Infinite number of facts you can put together with variables to have different scenarios for different things. So when we do have an outbreak, if multiple students, more than two of a cohort are exposed to COVID, then the the entire cohort could go back to CDL for 10 days. That's the amount of time for quarantine. Now, it was shortened from 14 to 10. So that's the closest answer I can give. Unless we have more specifics outlining what the context is of the scenario, we can't give a more detailed answer than that. And so this is the slide I want to talk, talk to you mostly about tonight, and that is what exactly, where exactly are we in our plan? First off, we take a look at the adjusted advisory metrics. So the adjusted metrics changed from having to be within 50 to 100 cases per 100,000 to less than 350 cases per 100,000. And right now, we've seen a significant drop in cases. There's been a downward trend in Marion County for the past number of weeks since, since the end of December, actually. And we just got numbers an hour ago to where we are now 376 cases per 100,000. The metric, of course, is 350. And that's the metric for elementary right now because elementary will be the the cohort of kids likely that most likely that will come back first. I'll talk about that in a minute. And Clackamas County is now meeting in both cases per 100,000 and test positivity. And so that's also good news. So we're very close to meeting the metric in Marion. We've met the metrics in Clackamas. In Marion, we're also meeting in test positivity. So we're just waiting for this number. And I fully expect the next time that these are updated, we'll be well within the advisory metrics. This is why we decided to go forward as of late, late December with a plan to reopen schools. Knowing that it takes between six and eight weeks to wake up the district and get it moving. After having done all of the safety work and planning ahead of time. We're also looking at the ZIP code metrics. Those are also another data point that we're taking into consideration. And those are also, we're seeing favorable trends in that data. We have also pushed out, excuse me, sorry. We have pushed out, trying to move my Zoom windows so I can see. Pushed out the scheduling window from February 15 to February 26. That's an additional two weeks. The main driver behind that was the fact that we now have massive availability to and access to vaccines. And I'll talk about that in a minute also. So we're so close to the vaccine, it made more sense to just push the window out another couple of weeks to ensure that our 520 employees have a chance to receive both doses of of the vaccine before we start. It wouldn't make any sense at all to me to start having people come back to work when, when we don't have access to that when it's so close. So the other thing that we've done is we've received additional guidance, like we said, on January 19. And we're in the process of, again, rewriting our school blueprints, our district and school safety blueprints. So that those 164 items are updated and ready to go. Those all have to be in place before the start date. We have our nurses working hard going over the training schedule that will have to do with buildings again because it's been over six months since we've last done that. We need to revisit those. And everybody knows that we've sent out the the analysis of the staff and community surveys that has gone out to the community. The community overwhelmingly supports the opening of schools. We had 1,400 respondents and 80% of course responded, they want their kids in school. That's about 1,200. Although it's not the 4,000 that we were hoping for, but it is a significant number. And again, it's one data point that we're taking into account. We're still waiting. We will be pushing out the classified, the results of the classified employee survey very soon as well. And we're taking that as a data point as well. So the barriers, I want to talk about the barriers to to our plan. And number one is that we must offer both CDL and hybrids simultaneously since we're still out of the advisory metrics. We're above those. Now, even though we're getting close, we can't bank on that because we can't open unless we have both instructional models fully staffed and ready to go. Now, that's difficult for somebody who's not knee deep in our work to understand the the technicalities of how complicated that work is. But essentially, we need to reach out to every single family to ascertain whether or not they're coming back to school in a hybrid model or staying in CDL while we're outside of the advisory metrics. Because we have to know how many teachers we need for both instructional models. So that's an enormous algebraic equation that needs to be balanced. So we're right in the middle of that. Principals are taking the lead, contacting their families. As you saw, Parent Square message went out today, giving our families a heads up as well. And the only thing I'd like to ask from our community right now is for your grace in that our support staff will be calling to get this information. We have to make multiple phone calls to families. We apologize for that. But we have to be absolutely certain on the numbers. Because it only takes a couple dozen kids to change how many teachers we need in each model. And so I just want to make sure that I'm apologizing beforehand for the inconvenience of please understand that there is no playbook for this. And we want to make darn sure that before we communicate out our start dates, we understand what our facts are. Once we get that data, then we'll understand whether or not staff transfers or assignment changes have to take place. So we may have staff transferring buildings. We may have staff transferring from comprehensive distance learning to hybrid. It all depends on the numbers that we get back. And one of the most important things I want to mention here around barriers is that there are two competing philosophies out there, it seems. Not just in Silver Falls, but in all school districts on how best to give kids access to instruction. And one of the most controversial topics is having video cameras set up in classrooms. So kids who are learning remotely can just dial into the class. The problem with that is that our teachers don't teach in a lecture model. We don't teach like that anymore. That's a prehistoric model. We don't, we don't stand in front of kids and just talk at them. We actually have activities designed to differentiate instruction and and that are way more conducive to kids actually being there. The other thing is teaching online remotely and teaching in a classroom are two completely different skill sets. So to ask a teacher to do both to me is is monumental. And to me is is borderline unreasonable. So we're grappling with that also. We have a board member who's also a teacher, Jennifer Trager, and I have had a lot of discussion around this too. And and we've been talking to a lot of teachers as well. It's, it's just not that easy to have kids pipe in and listen to a teacher giving instruction. Because the sound isn't as good, the video isn't as good, and the experience is is not even inequitable. It's just flat out unequal. And so I just want to make sure that I'm clear on those competing philosophies. Number two is the ODE operational blueprints and the 164 items that need to be addressed before we begin bringing kids in. And our principals are and others are busy making sure that their plans are updated and rewritten. And one of the caveats in the new guidance is that for any school that's above the advisory metrics, which we still are in Marion County, we have to be below the metrics in both counties to be able to open schools that we have to offer testing availability for students. And that would come with a whole host and process of parent permission and all of that. Nobody's going to be testing kids without parents' permission. And and we want to make sure that we're being really clear about that. It's really the availability of of the testing that we have, have to have up and running. And we have to have the process in place by March 1. That means all of the materials, all the resources, and the entire process for the district. And so that gives you three pretty sizable barriers that we're negotiating right now. Neither one is a showstopper, by the way. But each one requires a monumental amount of work. So I just want to make sure that that we understand it may be three, but it's three rather compelling things that we need to negotiate in a short order of time. Getting to the priorities. So what are our priorities right now? What exactly are we doing to open schools? So number one, we're identifying a specific start date for for specific grade level bands. I'm not going to communicate that out tonight. We have a couple of other things we need to double check and confirm before we communicate that out. But it will go out Wednesday at the latest. Wednesday at the latest, we will communicate out with the first day back will be in the hybrid model. And that's for that's for specific grade levels that we've identified to start first. And I just want to be clear, not all grade levels will start at once. We're going to start with one group, and then we're going to build on that group with another group and so on. Once we can determine and ensure that safety procedures are being followed, the data is headed in the right direction. We'll start to add on grade levels. Now, this advice comes to us from the Oregon Department of Education. And and my colleagues and superintendents, and we meet every other week about this as well. That this is the best thinking. This is what we are urged to do. And coming out of, coming out of the guidance. So the second thing is we are partnering with Silverton and Saniam Hospitals. Silverton Hospital will has clinic for Silver Falls School District employees today, tomorrow, and Thursday. For any employee in the Silver Falls School District. We've reserved 600 doses of Moderna. Those are ready to go. And I just wanted to make sure I gave a huge shout out to Mayor Kyle Palmer and the team at Legacy Silverton Hospital as well as the team at Saniam Hospital for reaching out to us. We've talked to staff who have gone down to to Saniam to get their shots over the weekend. They said it was remarkable. What they did for our staff and for educators of other districts being so gracious. And I want to make sure that we extend our heartfelt thanks to them as well. We could not do this without their help, and we're so appreciative. Number three, which goes with number one, is we, we will identify an exact start date for staff. And staff will be coming back two weeks prior to the start date for students. Because they have to set up their classrooms and get ready. They've got to rearrange furniture and ensure social distancing and all of that stuff. And we want to make sure that we give our teachers enough time to prepare those spaces. All staff will be returning when we decide that. And all staff will be teaching CDL in their classrooms. And the reason why we do that, of course, is that we need to make it consistent for everyone. I also want to make sure that I point out here that we have a large number of classified employees who have been serving kids in our district for a limited in-person instruction programs for a very long time now. And I want to make sure that they hear from me how grateful I am for all of their help. Meeting kids in school each day, doing their very best. Dan Bush and I went to every Lippi program last week and personally thanked every classified employee. And I want to tell you that when I finished my day that day, I was so filled with pride that I get to work in a district with adults that committed. And I want to make sure that our classified employees understand just how grateful I am and and how grateful we are as a district for their help. For number four is ascertaining exactly the number of students returning in CDL and hybrid. And I've already gone over with you the enormous complexities of that. We need to ensure the staffing levels in both models. And our our principals are leading the charge on contacting every single family individually for every child. And our school principals are also reconvening their school reopening and safety committees to get additional feedback on the plans. Making sure that everybody is on the same page. And number six, staff safety trainings are are very important. We're getting those running as well. And nurses are putting together videos and also putting together a framework to make sure that our staffs and schools are trained up. Seven is that our schools will be holding individual community town halls to go over the safety procedures for COVID, the operational blueprint for each school, the expectations for the hybrid model, all the scheduling pieces and everything that that's specific to the school as well. So parents can have their questions answered in real time. This could go under as a barrier, but it's, it's also a priority, and that is Durham is finalizing our bus routes. We were finalizing that information with schools calling each individual family, and then Durham's taking that data and finalizing the bus routes. The huge issue right now is that we are down 20 bus drivers. We already have two coordinators at Durham that are out with flu-like symptoms as well. So general manager from another region is down helping out Durham and Silverton pick up the slack. So I want to make sure that we recognize Durham and everything that they're doing. They're so committed to customer service. They're doing everything they can. But these are the types of things that are that get completely with out of our control. And that is the fact that COVID has happened and and we've lost a lot of bus drivers because there's been no work. And so just something to keep in the back of your mind. And also the safety procedures with the drivers. And and the the one thing I really want to make clear, of course, to the public that might think, well, we can just take our own kids to school. Well, that's true. But in order for us to open our doors and our school facilities, we have to guarantee universal access for every single child. Every single one of our 4,000 children that we serve, that they have universal access every single day as well. And so that's another layer on top of this that that just adds to the challenge of of making sure that we're opening within the timeline that we communicate out. And the COVID liability protection, we've, we've sought a lot of advice, both from legal, from PACE. And right now, we feel that the data is moving in the direction such that right now, we don't need to seek a waiver. And I'm happy to talk to you about that later if you wish. But we've received a lot of, a lot of information from PACE especially. We have another meeting with PACE on Thursday. And we've also talked extensively with our Director of Finance, Steve Nielsen. He feels, feels very confident in this as well. It's important to keep in mind also that any day that our buses arrive at our schools, whether it's in good times or or what will be in hybrid, our district is always open to a significant amount of risk on a daily basis. So it's, it's something that we just need to keep in mind. And again, it's about managing that risk and making the most prudent decision we can with the data that we have. And lastly, I just wanted to touch on the slide again, and that is leading through crisis. And the three most important topics of leading through crisis, in my opinion, are number one, being completely honest with people. And I hope that you felt that tonight, that that this information has been honest and and that we've clearly identified the things that we're trying to take care of to to open schools in a hybrid format. Listening to all sides, especially for our community in Silver Falls, is important. And every single email that that I receive or that my team receives will get a personal reply from whoever it was sent to. I will always reply directly to any community member that emails me their thoughts. It is very important that even when we get out of the COVID era, we continue to listen to both sides. Even after decisions are made. Because we always want to make sure that we're, we're reading our community well, because that's why we're here. We're public servants, and we were here to serve the will of the community. And the last one, a really great mentor of mine once told me, if you have a plan, you work the plan. And that's what we're doing right now. We're working the plan. This plan has not changed a whole heck of a lot since we first communicated it out in early January. We've just added to it. And of course, plans always morph. And we always have contingencies on top of that. So having said that, we're just trying to make the blurry picture a little bit more readable. And I hope that we've achieved that tonight. And with that, I will take any questions. I'll go ahead and exit out of this screen. And I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thanks, Scott. Or any, any questions that you've got for Scott or Dan on this, on this presentation or on the reopening plan? Yeah, Tom?
Yeah, Scott, I really don't have a question, just, just a comment, just a, a big thank you for all the hard work and the planning and you know, the numbers seem to be going in the right direction and hopefully we'll, hopefully we'll get there. And I just, I, I know I sent a note to you, Scott, but you know, the Tuesday morning, I was heading down to work and I crossed Highway 214 to 13 Cascade Highway there at Markham. And I had to wait for a school bus going north and a school, and then a school bus coming south, you know, probably hauling Lippi kids, you know, back and forth. And I paused and I went, wow, I haven't seen that in a while. And it, it felt good. So I'm hoping that we I'm hoping that this trend continues. And you know, we can get some kids back in school where they belong. So thank you, thank you, thank you and your staff for all the hard work.
You're welcome, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Scott, I realized I had one that I didn't think of till now, but as, as we're reaching out to families and we're requesting sort of confirmation on this CDL versus hybrid. Are we, have we decided yet if that is a sort of lock a decision now in order to stabilize staffing challenges in the future? Or are we or do we have a plan for that piece? I realized as you were talking that I, I hadn't asked that ever.
Well, so one of the things that we're grappling with is that, is that offering CDL and hybrid at the same time is not sustainable. It's not sustainable at all. We just, we don't have enough resources. So it's sustainable to do temporarily while we're outside of the advisory metrics. But eventually, we're going to have to decide on one course of action. Because we just, in a district our size, we just don't have the resources. And so I, I hope that answers your question, John.
No, I, I think it does. And I was also curious, sort of as the metrics. I mean, let's just say the trajectory continues really positive. I remember there were three or four columns on that chart from the state, right? There was the 350 column, and there was, I think, the 200.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, if we start falling below some of those other ones, that might kick new challenges in play, right?
You're absolutely right. And you know, it starts at 350 because, of course, you know, we want to get the, the, our, our little kids who are most vulnerable because of how learning is done at, at, at age five and up back first. And and our thinking is that once we get to the other grades, we should be well within the other metrics. At least that's the hope. So but we do have to take into account that once we get into, you know, thinking about things like the high school, that there are certain things that make a high school wholly unique in terms of how they operate. And not the least of which is how sensitive master scheduling is. And Silverton High School is in a real rare area in that it has so many of these boutique classes. And 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 that you wouldn't normally see at every other high school. And so the master schedule is more or less built on a house of cards. So so we have to make sure that we're, we're taking that into account well, as well. But we do intend to communicate our, our start date by, by Wednesday. And we'll have more information for the grades that aren't announced on Wednesday going forward.
Thank you.
If I could just add to that, you know, I, I don't think locking anyone into any decisions. And I mean, the one thing I've learned is you got to be flexible in this. And you know, especially for families. You know, what they may have thought they were wanting or thinking, or their own dynamics change at a time to think we could lock people into one or the other, you know, I just, I think families need to, if they change their mind, need to give us some time to adjust for their individual needs. But I, I just don't think that that's the right way to approach families who are who are in crisis. We, we need to pivot with them. And as long as they can give us a little bit of time to figure it out.
We we need to pivot with them. And as long as they can give us a little bit of time to figure it out, we'll we need to adjust for them. We serve them.
Well said. Thanks, Dan. Other other questions from the board? Okay. Well, there being none, I am going to move us to the next agenda item, which is our discussion item. And this is a follow on to our training, our work session in December. And we had Steve Kelly from OSBA provide some training. And one of the things that he talked a lot about was a normal order of business template. And you know, our our policy declares that we actually will have one as adopted by the board. And so one of the things that we are going to do is we're going to bring this draft tonight to to talk through and and to discuss and to to figure out if we can land on one that we can we can adopt and have be our standard. And then we'll per policy do this annually, really, probably right after the, you know, in the July timeframe would be my guess. So any, well, I'll pause there for questions from the board, and then I'll kind of go into how I envisioned walking through this. Any any questions on that so far? Okay, so what I'm thinking is that I can share the template, presuming I have the right to do that. Yeah, share screen. Okay. All right, can you guys see the? Try that. I can't see what you, okay, or I got a thumb up from her. I can't tell what I'm sharing. Okay. So I should be sharing the general agenda order of business template, which would be approved by the board in July each year. And again, the idea is we'd go through this as a group discussing each item in turn. And my my thinking is if there's general consensus on a wording change or some other even substantive change, if everybody's nodding their heads and thumbs it up, and I don't hear any objections, we'll just make the change and move on. If there's any concern at all, I'd rather rely on Robert's rules. We'll have somebody, you know, I move that we change bullet four to read XYZ. If there's a second, we'll discuss it and ultimately vote and and if, you know, kind of go bullet by bullet through that. And then the idea is to end up with something that hopefully will be adoptable by the board as a whole. I'll have trouble reading the room, so speak up if you have any challenges. I've got on one side the the video and on another monitor, I'm sharing my documents, so. Okay, well, let's let's run through it. I guess I guess the first thing I'll do is I'll open it up to broad feedback and questions on the draft. The draft was based on Steve Kelly's presentation, along with any of our conversation that that night last month. And the attempt was to capture the essence of of sort of best practices along with our own maybe flavor mixed in. So any any feedback, any high level concerns or thoughts? No, is every, how about this? Is everybody good with proceeding as I've described? If so, I'll just start jumping into the template. Okay. Thanks, guys. These are the days I really miss being in person, just saying.
Exactly.
Welcome, welcome to comprehensive distance learning.
Yeah.
Well said.
Right. All right, so our first item, really the first four items, if we want to just consider them in a lump here, are essentially our standard that we've been following now for a while. We've got a call, the meeting and note attendance, our flag salute, our agenda review, which we added several months back, and our consent agenda, which basically says, you know, there's no discussion typically, but we remove items if anybody asks it to be so. And we died it add it back down to the action item section. Are there any any concerns? Let's just say with one, two, three and four?
No.
Yes, Janet.
Um, I just have a comment about number three, not a concern. I think it's important that that stay there. I've enjoyed that opportunity, and I think that having the opportunity there to motion to amend the agenda and add something is a really good fail safe. I hate to use the analogy of the filibuster because the filibuster is so problematic. But I feel like it's just a really good way to protect people's right or their or their opportunity to to basically put it before the board, whether they would be willing to entertain a discussion about an item. I don't think it's really good practice to do a lot. I don't wouldn't want that to become a regular course of action, because I think it disadvantages us to not really have materials to know in advance what we're talking about. So I don't know if there's a way to have that understanding or some sort of a definition so that we we don't fall into doing that too often, because I don't think it's ideal. I don't think it really allows us to prepare appropriately. But I do think it's good to have, like I said, as as something of a of a fails. That's just my comment about about that.
Yeah, I wonder if we could add something about that, about considering to yeah, considering the need to be transparent to have, you know, something published well in advance, so the public knows that it's being discussed so that materials can be gathered. I wonder if there's something that we could add there.
Are you thinking about making a just referencing in the italic text that really it isn't used because we really would prefer to have things on board book and ahead of time? Is that kind of where you're going with that? I'm not.
Yeah, maybe like it's preferable. It's preferable to have, I don't know what 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 you call it, though, preferable preferable. Because I don't want to say use sparingly, because that seems a little too. I don't know. Heavy, but something about that the the preference would be that agenda items can be planned in advance to benefit public comments.
Yeah, Jonathan.
Yep, I'm just sort of scratching something in here that we can talk about.
Yeah, Jonathan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember it was it was brought up during training and you know, if somebody wants to, you can't talk about something on your agenda without having documents available for everybody to discuss. So if something gets added at the last second, like what we're talking here, how do you then have a the a discussion on it properly for us or or the public? And I think that basically said how that would happen is that you would probably just you would add the item and then say, hey, we don't have the the items here to have a proper discussion. Let's table it till the next meeting. That's kind of how that that would be handled. Because I I don't know how you would. I don't know. I I mean, yeah, you could. And I I don't know how much added information you can have here, but the my only thought is that if it by definition or the agenda review would add, if if we found ourselves adding stuff to the agenda all the time, well, that means we have a board chair and a superintendent that can't read the board very well. And we'd have to take that up for the next, you know, at the next leadership election, something like that. That's how that situation would be remedied if it was used way too much.
Well, and and allowing the board to to vote on it, I think, is is the what enables us to know what to do with it. So for if I say I'd like to amend the agenda to talk about, you know, the trees in front of the high school and no one else on the board is interested in discussing that, well, then it's just gone away. But if everyone on the board says, hey, you know what? I would like to talk about that, too. Then we know, okay, now they because otherwise we can't necessarily pull one another ahead of time, right? We need to do these things in public. And so that gives us an opportunity to say, you know, that I feel like this is something we need to discuss. And to establish that, yes, it actually is something that the whole board is interested in. And now we can either discuss it that night. If people are like, yeah, I don't need materials, I'm good to go. Or no, we've got some research we need to do. Let's bump it to a future meeting. And it allows us to do that sort of straw poll and and establish that.
Sure, Janet. Yeah, I I get that. I guess my my thought would be that if you had five or six board members that wanted to talk about a topic, they would just call the the board chair and or the superintendent, let them know that this was a topic. And if it never came up, then you have a board chair that's blocking the topic, you know? So I guess there's two ways to to get to the same solution. So I think I think we're in agreement.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with what Jonathan, you've added in the italics on number three. I think that sounds good. You might need a period, though, after everyone. Or maybe not. Maybe you're not doing periods on any of them. That's fine, too.
Yeah, I'm not sure now. Looks like not unless I break a sentence, but.
All right, then never mind.
I can, anyway, I can clean that up. I think it's probably good to be consistent. So so I don't want to just add this unless everybody's kind of nodding heads or thinking they agree with what has been added. Every anybody disagree with what I added, which is the sentence, if appropriate, an item may be added and then tabled to the following meeting so that supporting materials may be made available to everyone. Did I misread you, Janet?
No, I think that's right. I'm I'm just, I want to make sure that the use of our word is of appropriate is clear. If the motion to amend is voted on and accepted, then ostensibly, at that point, we have, we can make a decision as a board whether or not we want to add it or table it. So.
About and/or maybe and/or table, because the and then implies that it will be tabled. I don't know, Janet. I'm just thinking out loud.
And that is a separate action. You, I mean, it it the way that Steve described it is that we would vote to add it to the that same meeting's agenda. And then when it comes up, that's when it could be tabled. So I get that point. I I maybe clarifying it a little bit further wouldn't be bad.
Maybe that would take another motion, because once you've added it to the agenda, right?
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to muddy it, I don't think. I don't think we want to. Yeah, muddy it. So if appropriate, an item may be added to the agenda. Oh, what if you just say if appropriate, any added item can be tabled later in the agenda?
Did I capture that right? Any added item may be tabled for the following? Is it two or four? I'm not sure, but two.
Yeah, except for I I do think that it needs to be clear that that would be happen in a separate step. So it could be, it could be that we just, we just delete everything you wrote.
I mean, in my mind, you know, I don't want to over engineer it either, right? I think I think we can.
You could say, you could say if accepted rather than appropriate, because it's a little clearer.
Nice.
Added item, because now it's been added, the added item may later be tabled. The added item may later be tabled to the following meeting.
That makes sense.
And I think that's, you know, clear, clear enough that we we understand.
Yeah.
You don't have to.
Okay, thumbs up. Anybody see this differently? Okay. So let's run through then the next item. So we've got it in the in the next section and there we know, I think there's some wiggle room here to discuss. We've got student representatives. We've got superintendent report, and I want to be clear, this is specifically for special occasions. I tried to put that in the italic text. But the idea here is like, for example, reopening, where we really would like Scott to be able to go early in the meeting. There's a lot of people waiting to hear what's going to happen, etc. So we've got that one. And then we've got the school slash principal report. Any any thoughts on the order of those three? We've got it in an order, and I'm open to suggestions.
I I guess the only, it's a small preference, so I wouldn't die on the hill, but I almost feel like it's more appropriate to put the superintendent report first. I know you're saying that it's if there are special circumstances. I I have a small preference for that, just because it gives our superintendent an opportunity to speak prior to our hearing from our student reps and kind of, you know, provide context, set the tone, do whatever he needs to do in order to sort of kick off our the meat of the of the meeting. But again, I would leave that really to Scott if he has a preference one way or the other.
I I think I have a similar thought, Janet, honestly. I vacillated a little bit on this and I I am easily convinced that that's the right location, because I think if it does need to happen, it likely is very important and might as well be first. Any concerns? I'm getting a lot of thumbs up. So any any concerns on the wording of number five, six or seven?
I I just wanted to say that that seven is an attempt to tighten up the level of specificity. Because the instructions that that Steve Kelly told us, you know, were that wide open headings are not transparent and that we want to be stingy with our time. So that was really the the driving principles behind that small change there.
Anybody object to moving on to items eight and nine? Okay, so eight and nine are SFEA and OSEA, which are very similar. We are, we're basically considering this a special form of public comment, which is what it is. And we are going to put a target of five to seven minutes on this. Normally, groups get five per our policy. This is a sort of special form. Five to seven seems reasonable. That's kind of what we're laying out. I don't think anybody's, you know, running the stopwatch. But I think if we're in that range, it's it's appropriate. Yeah, everybody good? Okay. Next up, number 10, public comment, open to any relevant board business. This is our more or less unchanged from practices for a long time. So this is our first public comment, basically. Okay. Administrator and staff reports, keep to a minimum, use time judiciously. Again, that's Steve's recommendation for us, where we will try to list the items with specificity and supporting documents, of course, available on board book. But in essence, this is our standing administrator and staff reports item. And this is where a superintendent report would go unless there's urgency to where it would go at the beginning. report would go unless there's urgency to where it would go at the beginning. Any concerns? Right. Discussion items, not very fancy, just issues one, two, three, et cetera. These are just our discussion items, which we have on every agenda, essentially. Okay, not hearing any objection. We'll move on to 13 board reports. So what we've tried to do here was take Steve's advice. He I think originally we scratched this. But basically, because it's a longstanding tradition, what we thought we'd do is make a slight modification to it. Basically, we'll keep it if requested. So if a board member has a, a report they'd like to give, it sort of follows the agenda item review process. They would request to be able to speak about an item during board report time. We'd list it with specificity again for transparency purpose. Supporting documents, if any, were relevant to the topic. And the idea here is that any board report that would have normally been able to be, to be given is still able to be given through this process. But we wouldn't just have sort of a what I'll call an open mic, you know? Anybody have a board report, right? Well, if we don't know what it is, the ideas, we probably should have known ahead of time so that supporting documents, et cetera, could be on here.
Let me ask about that board report. Would that, could that potentially be denied?
If, if the request was to talk about something that wasn't considered board business by Scott and the board chair, right? I mean, you know, if, if somebody says, I'm going to come in and I'm going to, I'm going to talk about I don't know, something riots in Portland, I don't know, you know, pick something that, you know, and if we say, well, that hasn't really got anything to do with board business. Yeah, it could be denied, right? I mean, so, so that's why we say it would follow the normal agenda item review process. And ultimately, it would then follow it all the way to the point where if somebody felt really strongly and it had been denied and communicated, you know, you could, you could bring it up during the agenda review and say, I really would like to have a slot during board reports for this topic. And ultimately, the board is then the deciding factor and would speak as a board on the topic.
Yeah, I, I. I was. Go ahead, Lori.
I feel a little uncomfortable about that because I think with the history of agenda items in general and how they either have been overlooked or not placed on the agenda, I'm afraid that we're going to run down into the same thing. And I believe if someone is passionate about something and it is related, I'm not sure why that can't be shared. And so what I'm feeling is that it's another. Then we're going back into amending or bringing it up. And, and I'm just afraid that we're going to start abusing, just like point of order. For there for a while, we were overusing it. And now I'm afraid we're going to start falling into the I'm, I'm afraid we're going to start overusing amending the agenda or the topic because it may or may not be considered. That's my concern, that it's going to cause some frustration in some cases. And that's my concern. And so I'll just leave, yeah.
Yes, Jennifer.
Well, Steve did, his suggestion was to eliminate board reports entirely. And he did mention that everything that the board should consider regarding action items should come through the superintendent. And so to me, I thought, well, if, if there is going to be some kind of board report based on a special assignment that we've been given by Scott, then that would be something that we would arrange ahead of time to put on the agenda and have supporting documents if, if we, as board members, were going to talk about those things.
Thank you, Jennifer. Other board members with thoughts on this one?
Yeah, I wonder if it, if it comes down to sort of what the definition of a board report is to some extent. And I guess for me, I think about it is that it's something you've done in the course of your duties as a board member. You know, I sort of think the school visits is sort of the easy and obvious example. I'm trying to think, you know, as Lori's describing her, her discomfort with it, you know, what other things might come up that would qualify under that, that heading. And I, you know, and I don't know necessarily. I guess one thing is, we will revisit this in July. So we can always give one approach a try. Depending what we would decide on and then just know, okay, well, let's see how we do with it. You know, this is a learning process. And if it gets away from us, then we're going to have to revisit it in July. And I think we'll know.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, I think I guess my own two cents on it. I think that because we now have the opportunity to to really bring an item up, if somebody feels strongly about it and they think, they think of it as a board report. And maybe, maybe, you know, myself and Scott would look at it and see, you know, it doesn't feel like a board reporter. It's not pertinent or urgent business or whatever, right? And, and there's disagreement. I, I do think there's a remedy to that now, which we're working on smoothing out. I, I will admit, it hasn't been super smooth. It's the gender review and amending the agenda. But I think, I think with practice, we can get good at it. I hope it isn't used a lot. But I do think that it's something that does provide transparency and provides an outlet. If, if, if the board wishes to hear that item, they will. It is how I see it.
I'm not comfortable with that. But I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Well, I think.
The reason why I'm not comfortable with it, because it really, I, I'm not comfortable with the idea, well, we can practice this. Maybe if, you know, we, if it doesn't quite work out. And I think, I feel like we've had enough history with the amending, the agenda. How that could potentially go. I, I do think parameters are healthy on those things, but I believe the board as a whole should define the parameters. And my only concern is, is that there could be many possible topics and they simply aren't allowed to be shared. And then to go through the process of amending. I, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm just having, that's where my discomfort is.
Sure.
Yeah. So I'll just, I'll leave it there.
Well, one, one way to handle this is if, if you'd like to make a motion for a different wording or a change to item 13, you could. And then ultimately, the board will pass or fail that, that motion, Lori. But if you don't make that motion, I, I think we'll we'll continue on as I'm not hearing a lot of objection to 13 at this point.
Okay.
Yes, Herb.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of just completely removing that, like he suggested. I think that will save a lot of heartburn and clean it up and speed it up. And, yeah.
Thanks, Herb. I, I think what we're hoping for with this slight variation on that is that on many agendas, it won't be present because on many agendas, nobody will have submitted a request to speak during board reports or will have done something worthy of a board report, right? So, you know, I think of things like conferences or school visits for maybe you're on a subcommittee and you have something that specifically you've been asked to report by Scott, let's say. Those are the types of things that come to mind, but I would think typically there aren't things that are, that are appropriate in most, most months. Okay, I think in the interest of time, what I'll ask is, does anybody object? Moving to item 14. Okay, now item 14 would be the second public comment. This is occurring prior to action items. And this again follows our longstanding tradition of having two public comments during the meeting.
Has it always been traditional to have two public comments? Some have, I know that some school districts have one, but is it traditional to have two? Is that part of the courtesy for the public so they can come forward and speak?
It has been here, Jennifer, yes?
We, Renee tried to get us to eliminate one of them. And we got a lot of strong public comment against doing that.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've had two, we've had two public comments since, as long as I've been on the board.
Oh, okay.
I'm in favor of leaving it. I, you know, it's, it's used judiciously by the public typically. And I find it interesting, you know, maybe they thought of something after the first public comment, but before we get to our action item that they'd like to share with us. And that's fair. Any, anything else on item 14?
Say that it just broadens opportunities for people to work around their work schedules as well.
Right. Right, item 15 is the, you know, again, the corresponding, you know, action item list that may or may not have originated from some of the discussion items. We, we've also had a history since I've been on the board and for much prior to having action items split apart from discussion items. Note, I'm going to note something here. Note that that's not a requirement of Robert's rules. It's not a requirement of board meetings to do it that way. I think it was set up that way so that specifically we could have an additional public comment between the discussion and the action. And so this is honoring that and would be following a fairly longstanding tradition within the board. Okay, the next one is called future agenda item request. And I think this would piggybacks nicely on our discussion about the agenda amendment. The idea is that if something is on your mind, you'd have the opportunity to you know, make a, make a request. If possible, it'd be really nice if you let superintendent and or board chair to know what was coming, but that's not a requirement. Consists of a short statement from the board member discussing a future agenda item. I want to be careful. This is a slippery slope, as Steve mentioned. Because you really quickly, if, especially if it's something you're really passionate about, are suddenly marching right down the actual discussion rather than just suggesting an item for future.
Yeah.
But it does give us a chance to think about the lens that Steve referenced during training regarding agenda item requests, which is does it affect the superintendent's work? Is it board work? How does it support or impact our district priorities? And what policies are related to the issue? And I think those are really important for us to all remember. Regardless of what the issue is, we're recommending for the agenda or why. These are the types of things that we discuss when we're preparing an agenda and try to make sure that we take into consideration. And then the last note down at the bottom, you know, board members can follow up with the superintendent or board chair to express their thoughts, concerns, or support. Again, the idea is we're not going to launch into a discussion about the request for the agenda item.
Right.
You're potentially then in the middle of the discussion. So the idea here, though, is it gives us an opportunity to say, hey, I've got this item that, you know, the trees in front of the high school, right? And, and you, as you mentioned earlier, Janet, that gives you an opportunity to sort of, you know, get a feel for, is that a concern of other board members? Is, is that a unbeknownst to you, there's five other board members that think that is a good item, right? So, and as you said, if there's, you know, ultimately, if there's crickets or it never makes itself onto the agenda, you know, okay, you, you kind of, you had your public say about why it mattered to you and, and it didn't make the agenda. Okay, you know.
I have a related request then. Obviously, it's, it's regarding agenda item requests, not necessarily at this point in the agenda, but prior to the meeting. Is it, is it possible that if somebody requests something to be put on the agenda and that request is declined? I, I just feel like it would be courteous just to provide that member with an explanation as to why it's been declined, rather than having them wait until you know, Wednesday or Thursday to see, okay, well, I don't know if it made it or not.
It is my intent, I'll just jump in. It is my intent, starting from this moment forward, to honor that request and to do exactly that. I think there's no reason not to. You know, Steve kind of talked about, well, it's pretty obvious if it made it or not. But I don't think there's a downside to, to sending a no indicating, listen, you know, we've talked about it. Maybe this, you know, maybe just putting it in the frame of this lens. And at the moment, we didn't feel it was a priority and here's why, whatever, right? We'll, we'll fill the person in. And I do think that's fair and ought to be, ought to be done.
I think it's really helped because there, there's probably broader context for why it's not a good time to be discussing whatever subject it is. And it allows that person to feel like, oh, well, okay, I'll just, I, I, it won't keep bugging you then. I understand that maybe we'll talk about it in six months or something like that. I think it just helps everyone be clear. Sorry, Jennifer.
That's okay. I think I agree with you. And I think that the idea that we talked about was that, you know, Jonathan does give his Friday messages to the board and that it just included in that to all board members, not just one, one board member, but everybody can see it. So again, it's another opportunity, kind of like, you know, I really pushed this 16 future agenda items because I feel like if you don't know, somebody else is thinking about it, you don't know that there's a critical mass. So again, having that communication go out to all board members, I, I think is, is important.
That's really a really good point. And I think that would make.
Um, I, I believe that we talked about something similar to this when Renee Sessler was doing her training with us. And I'm not sure if that was in September or October. And it was my understanding that we would be notified if, if we were to request an agenda item and then I guess be informed if it did or did not fit within the framework of the agenda. And I I can say it was a noise consistent. So I guess that's probably where my I have a little bit of a lull with it. If we're going to have proper notification, I think that needs to be written, agreed upon, so it does in fact happen as opposed to what we've experienced before. At least I have. So.
Right. I, I think what you're talking about is it's not really part of an agenda template or a order of business resolution, but it is sort of it, it's related loosely to that. And it's related more, more to policy, I think, than to. it, it's related loosely to that and it's related more, more to policy, I think, than to than to this document, at least that's my reading of what you're saying. Cause I think what you're saying is you'd like it to be in policy that the, the, that there be some kind of formal acknowledgement of the agenda item request following some prescribed, you know, requirements.
Well, it would be, yeah, I hear what you're saying, Jonathan. Yeah, I think it would be nice if it wasn't policy, it may not really fit that bracket. But, but also too, I, I believe we have discussed this in the past that, you know, if someone has recommended an agenda item, that they would be told it would or wouldn't make the agenda. And I thought that was as far back as when Renee Sessler was providing us with training. So I, the, the problem is if it isn't in writing, then there's no guarantee. It, and, and there's always, it's easy to ease out of something when it isn't solidified in word.
Trying to think about a jet, so.
And, and so I don't know how that looks, but I'm, I'm wondering if that's, if that isn't a discussion item down in the near future about how we want that notification to look or because for a while there, we were going straight to the superintendent. I think that was under Renee Sessler and now, now we're talking, and then Steve Kelly mentioned something. So I kind of feel that there's been a little bit of a contradiction with our training.
There, there has been, there has been here. Renee was very much pointing out that her read of it was that the chair was the one who was or excuse me, that the superintendent is the one that should be receiving. And our policies are, you know, as Steve pointed out, do kind of, you could interpret that from our policies, but our policies are a bit different from what OSBA, their templates are, which really talk about the board chair supported by the superintendent. So that has been something that they had, they weren't consistent with, and it could be because Renee is a former board member and Steve's a former superintendent, so.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, I guess that's probably as a board member personally. I've been having a little bit of vertigo with it because I'm, I'm hearing and witnessing these contradictions. So I, I think the main thing is, I guess on this one would be consistency, something that we can all agree to and, and move forward with, so.
Yeah, and I, I would, I would intend to honor that. I think it certainly needs to be done. If, if it needs to be ratified in policy at some point, we can certainly treat that as a future agenda item request.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so that's item 16 and then item 17 is adjourned, so I doubt there's a lot of
Jonathan, can I, can I pivot back to board reports again? I have a, I have a perspective to offer that might help Lori. And I don't know if we need to articulate it in words or whether it's, if it's, if it's understood that that's what we're talking about. So I think I'm going to speak for you, Lori here and, and please correct if I'm wrong.
Okay.
Your discomfort is in with the element of this that speaks to approving, approving the, the, the subject. And I think I'm reading it as what this gives an opportunity to is to know about it ahead of time. So that, so that we all know what the subject is. Lori visited Silvercrest and she wants, would like to talk about her visit to Silvercrest. It is not necessarily a chance for things to be approved or disapproved. Now clearly if something is way out of bounds, then I would think that the chair and superintendent would say that's just not even appropriate. But I'm also, I'm also understanding that you, that they will be quite liberal in honoring whatever subject a board member would like to talk to as long as it's an appropriate subject and that it isn't necessarily designed to say, okay, well, now we're going to scrutinize all of these and throw them out. It's more a, no, now we just know ahead of time what's coming, which is nice for everybody, right? Cause now there are no surprises. So I don't, I think you would want to set me straight if I'm not understanding that the right, the right.
Yeah, and I think, I, I think you did cover it. Yes, you did it well, Janet. I think my concern is too, is, is overusing to amend the, you know, amend agenda items or then try to run and amend something that you're very passionate about. Cause to me, I don't know what the feeling is, but it, it, it's not a comfortable one when it comes to amending. Because you're, you're up against a vote again, you know, and defeat is never fun. And but if you believe in something so much and feel, wow, how, how could this not be part of it? You know, I think that's where I'm at. I just, that's where I'm really sensitive about notifications and following up because what we currently have right now is that we have four individuals, two administrators and a board chair and a vice chair meeting. And so they've already got, they know what's going to go on that agenda. And I think the rest of us sort of have to do the wait and see. And I just wish there was just a little bit more, I don't want to use a little bit more liberal communication that way. And I think that's where I'm, I'm very much for notification. And, and also, you know, just having the basic parameters too of what that is, but thank you, Janet, for, I, I think what you said is spot on. But that's, I just wanted to add to where my concern is and where I just waiver a bit on that. So, yeah, thank you.
One thing that I'd like to point out is that when the agenda is set, you know, it's, it's not, it's not a, a secret party, right? I mean, it's, it's just, we're talking about the items that are pertinent to the superintendent or that have come in as requests and evaluating them, laying out the format of the meeting, you know, doing the, it's not necessarily and work, it's, you know, it's just work, right? Doing the work of laying out an agenda, making sure that we have everything organized, that we hopefully have documentation ready for the items that are ready to be on the agenda. And ultimately, yes, we, we apply that lens, right? Is, are we doing things that matter? Is it time well spent? And Lori, to, to your point, if, if you've got something that is, you think is going to fail a vote to get added to the agenda, you got to remember the board speaks with one voice and the board sets the agenda. And so if the board, and by the board, I mean the, a majority of the board.
It is, yeah, it's the majority.
You're right. They're, they're not, they don't think it's appropriate. They're not, they're not, it's not going to improve, right? And so I just want to be clear. That's not my choice as chair. It's the board's voice and I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah, I, I know, but it's still, it's, I just don't want to, I just hope down the road that we don't start overusing amending because then if we're overusing it, then that means that there is a deficiency. I think that was already brought up by Tom if I didn't misread what he said, but. So.
And I think we're all trying to find a really healthy balance here between
Yes.
rigid or, you know, very prescribed meetings where you're, you're very, very what you can say and when you can say it. And, and kind of a free for all that doesn't serve anyone. And so I think we're all working really hard to figure out what that balance is. I mean, you know, Erv would like to get rid of the whole category and I, and I in that perspective, and then, you know, there are others who say, well, I'd like more opportunities to speak about things that I'm interested in and passionate about. So I think we're trying to find that happy medium that, that is just, that is really effective.
Yeah, and, and that's really hard to do. That really is hard to do. It is.
Hi, Shelley.
Hi, I apologize for being so late to the meeting. I was on a critical phone call for my dad. So anyway, back in Nebraska, so I, I don't know everything you guys have talked about, but there's just a couple of things that I wanted to mention was we've never, in, in the time I've been on the board, we've never as a board gone over any of the agenda items and discussed it as a board, defined it for us as a board and then implemented it as a board. And I'm really grateful to actually see this happening because this promotes teamwork. And it promotes the spirit of working together and defining together. And the only thing that I can remember being on the board that we actually defined at one point was board reports. And that was, there was a, a board member, I don't remember who it was, several years ago, who said, you know, I'd like to see board reports be positive only, only positive information, like visiting a school or, you know, as a board member, I attended, you know, a play at the high school or I went to Victor Point for a Christmas festival or some kind. And we all agreed to that. We thought that that was in the spirit of, you know, sharing the good stuff when you're a board member. And I really liked that and that just stuck in my head all these years. So that's my two cents for board reports. Is that we defined it as it only being positive, that we didn't, you know, have to turn it into the superintendent and get it approved and, you know, get it approved by the, the chair. And it was, it was simply, we all understood and we defined it together. And I'd like to see that still continue for, excuse me, the board reports. The, the board reports to me in the, in, if you can scroll down just a little bit to the board reports, the proposal, could that, could you do that for me? Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. So I'd like to, you know, I'd like to see that just go away. I, I don't think, I think we should go back to it being, you know, just a positive report. You know, and not have to buy request of board members to the superintendent or board chair in advance of the meeting. And it just, it takes out the spirit of what it's been for so many years. And then as far as down below, everything else looks great to me. I'm, you know, I think that all the other sections are exactly what we do anyway. And then the future agenda item request. And I think that that's a good statement right there on there. And those are good questions to keep in mind when you're wanting to do future agenda item requests. And I think that we should still have that because it's important. We're elected officials. There's a reason people elected us and our voices should be heard. Whether it's, you know, and it shouldn't have to be approved by the majority of the board that our voices should be heard. That's not the spirit of being a board member and, and creating a proactive collaborative teamwork. And so if we all go into the spirit of this and making sure that we all make the decision together on what it's going to be. That's, that's what I'm looking forward to. So that's, that's my two cents. I don't know if even then that's been said, but in any case, everything else looks great and I appreciate you doing the work in giving us a draft and bringing it to the whole board to work together on and make decisions together as a board, as one voice and defining it as one voice. So I, that's, I hope that happens every time from here on out. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and you know, Shelley said a few things, but I think the other thing too, Jonathan, is I think some of my reservation about things is because I hate things being adversarial. And so when I, if, if it's regarding, you know, board reports or agenda items, then, you know, one would come back and say, well, why isn't it board business? Or you come back and say, or it's, and then to amend, I know it's an opportunity, but I guess maybe it's me personally, I just hate it when things go adversarial. And, 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 and there's probably a reason why we're discussing all this is so we can avoid it from being that way. But I, I think that's how I have felt about amending the agenda. So maybe it's just my glitch that I have to work through, but I would prefer, I guess, for things to be as smooth as possible. So I think that's where I tend to lean towards the importance of notification for all board members. So anyway, that's it.
Thanks. I, I think, you know, the intent here is to find some kind of happy medium between
I agree.
Predictability breeds trust, right? And so one of the things that we're working for is making board meetings predictable. Making sure that there aren't things that are completely surprising to anybody that end up inadvertently or indirectly on the agenda either, you know, regardless, I guess of how it gets there. And that, and so Steve really emphasized that and he actually had suggested board reports and item 16 here, not even as necessary. And I think as Jennifer and I were talking about it and taking your guys' feedback, we thought that they really, they really can stay, but we wanted to put some parameters around them so that we're not in a free for all at any point during the meeting. That's really what I think the aim is. And, and you know, I, it feels to me like this would support that. And, and I, I guess I, I can appreciate what you're saying and I'm not trying to suggest otherwise. But, but I, how else to find that happy medium? You know, on one end, you could just make it prescribed and on the other end, you could make it wide open. So this was a, a way to try to bridge that gap.
Right, I hear that. And I, and I think too, the training with Steve Kelly too, for me personally felt a little harsh at times. I know that he, he discussed something about, well, it's not about you, the individual, but there are seven individuals that make up the board. And, and all of our voices need to be heard so we can come to, I guess, that will of the board, which is the majority. So that's very important. So parts of what he said, I am reserved on because I, I think we are in a public meeting and we need to have that ability to all of us freely express where we're at. And so anyway, cause that leaves, that provides the foundation for good discussion and for us to feel comfortable in sharing our opinion. So that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I just had a quick follow up from Lori and Lori, you're, it's not your glitch at all. I feel, I felt the same way as you for a little while, but I, I want to reemphasize that this draft, bringing it to the board and doing it with the whole board in discussion in public is exactly what we have been taught by OSBA and our trainer. With all due respect to Steve Kelly, I, I disagree with several things that he has, he said in the last meeting. I wasn't there, but I did listen to the, the video. And Renee Sessler has given us so much good information about how to be a healthy board. And I, I, I go back and I rely on her knowledge since she was a board member. But then she also taught, you know, about being a board member and such. So with that being said, you know, bringing, if we, if we get it in our heads that we bring everything to the board and do it together as one voice and we decide together and we make our voices heard one time. That's the most important thing. Anything else that happens outside of, outside of this agenda? Anything else that happens outside of, outside of this agenda, you know, there's other policies that we can go through to fulfill those things. There's, if somebody, if a board member has a problem with another board member, we have a complaint process, you know, anything like that. But I do like discussing the parameters, and this, yeah, this is really healthy. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think the question then on the table, having made our way through the document, is, is really, you know, what are the next steps? And I think, you know, this, this document, in order to be adopted, has to be voted on. We have to have a motion and a vote. We can do that, we can do that tonight, we can do that in another meeting, but I'm, I'm just trying to read you guys and get a sense of, of where your preferences lie. Because I won't be able to take this as the template until we have adopted it. Prior to that, it, it'll remain essentially status quo, which is a little bit wide open because really, we haven't done this in a very long time. But
Yeah.
So, so anyway, I'm going to just open up that as a discussion question. Where are you guys at? And I want to hear from everybody, you know, would you like to move forward? Would you like to revisit a section? Would you like to, how would you like to proceed? Yes, Lori?
Yeah, I would like to be able to sit down with this and review it and, and look at the, the grammar and, and all that, and then come back to revisit it to solidify it. That's what I'd like to do, is just have some time just to review it again. Just for those details.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Other board members, I'd like to kind of get a sense of where we're at, if I could.
If you have something to say, but I'd like to have other board members speak first, if they are so willing or liking.
Yeah, Jonathan, I liked, I liked it. We made a couple of changes, and I'm pretty much ready to approve it, but I don't mind waiting in a meeting. To let board members look at it and push it off to a meeting, that's, that's, that's fine with me. But I, I like it. It kind of just answers some questions. You put the parameters on there, and, yeah.
I'm comfortable with it as it is, but I'm also, it never hurts to take another week or two to sort of chew on what we've decided, and then maybe come back and approve it at our next regular meeting. That seems, there's no urgency to do it tonight, and if, if it would help some people to have a little bit more time with it, I think that's always a good thing.
Thank you, Janet.
Jennifer?
I'm also fine with adopting it tonight, mostly because we don't have anything that we're working from officially at this point. We have, you know, kind of, we've been doing, hasn't been board approved. So I wouldn't mind doing it tonight, and then we can amend it in future if necessary. I also wonder about the practicality because this was the time that we reserved for the wordsmithing. And so we've already spent our time on the wordsmithing, and so to push it off doesn't buy us any time for wordsmithing. So I guess that's my concern about pushing it off.
Thank you. Erv or Shelley, would you like to weigh in? Yeah, Shelley?
Shelley, I was going to give Erv the opportunity to speak. I think I've spoken a lot. I'm not ready to adopt this tonight. I don't think that this is the first time we've seen it. This is the first discussion that we've had with it. And it sounds like you guys had made some changes to the word, to the language that I'm not aware of, unfortunately. But I guess my two cents is I'd like to remove anything of, or the board reports. I would like to remove the wording from that and use the historical spirit of board reports, which is a, you know, a proactive time where board members can share happy things, you know, or things that they've done, or conferences they've gone to, or, you know, and such. It's always been a successful part of our agenda. And I don't know, I'm not, I'm a little bit of traditional there, because I think it's, it's a good feeling to share things like that at board reports. And the other thing is, is for SFEA and the Licensed Association, excuse me, I'm so sorry. I don't like having a specific time put on there, five to seven minutes. I think that, you know, the wording on their special form of public comment target should be five to seven minutes. Okay, well, I think it depends on what kind of environment we're in and what kind of environment SFEA or the licensed staffer in, they might need much longer than that. I don't like to have it so strict. They are guests of ours coming here, and we have a place for them on our agenda. So I don't like to put, you know, time constraints on that. I think they, they will largely target that time, but I don't want to throw that in their face. I don't think that that's a proactive thing to do for them. And then for the future agenda items, I, I do like the future agenda item idea down at the bottom. So I'd like to have just one more, little bit more time, push it off to the next meeting and potentially approve it then. We've been working long enough without one, and I think we're going to be fine. We've had a good discussion here tonight. So I think that's good. So, yeah.
Okay, I, I want to, I want to address a couple of things. The only change that we made, I think, unless somebody, oh, wait, there were two changes. So we added this sentence that I've highlighted here. So just as a heads up, it's basically if accepted, meaning the agenda item, the added item may later be tabled to the following meeting so that supporting materials may be made available to everyone. That's optional. That was Steve Kelly's recommendation. So that was just an added clarification that that's a possibility. The other thing that we did, which was very minor, was we moved item five superintendent report was number six. We swapped five and six.
Oh.
So those are really, I think, the only two changes we made, unless I'm forgetting something.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate you showing me that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and then, oh, we also talked about the SFEA and OSEA, and I specifically said, you know, we're not running a stopwatch here. We're just sort of giving a guideline, sort of an expectation, so that there's a sense of understanding, mutual understanding of sort of what we're thinking the target should be as far as timelines go. Again, using our time judiciously, we have a lot of things on our agendas during regular board meetings.
Got it. Thank you for, for sharing that, Jonathan, and that, that, that gives me a lot more clarity for sure, and answers my questions about the timing. I'd like to just keep in mind that the spirit of having them, it was, it was hard to get them on the agenda for a long time, and I, I want them to feel at home, and we only meet, you know, once a month when they're here. So I, I just want them to, I still want to have a very healthy relationship with the board superintendent in our, in our associations. I think that was a step in the right direction, so I want it to be solid. And so, yeah, um, yeah, I, that sounds good. I'd like to hear from them to a certain degree. They might know things that we don't, as far as if they need more time or not. And I think maybe we have the spirit to, if they need more time, we can give it to them. You know, this isn't about, you know, time constraints on our meetings. We have to do our business in public, and whether that takes 30 minutes or three hours, we have to do it in public, and that's what we're here for. So that's the public meeting laws, and that's why we're elected to do our work in public. So.
All right, thank you. Well, Erv, we haven't heard from you on whether, you know, your thoughts on approving this tonight or waiting. Do you have thoughts you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess I expressed my thoughts earlier, and then you commented on them, and that cleared up. So, yeah, it'd be great if, you know, at every meeting, we didn't have a board report, unless it was something, you know, worthy of reporting on. And then kind of to, just the counter to what Shelley said, I was thinking that the SEA reports should be three to five minutes max. I don't think they need to be strung out. They shouldn't have any more time than the community does. That's how I feel about it. But as far as, yeah, I'm ready to approve it tonight. I mean, it's not a big change.
Okay, thank you.
I just, if I may, just respond. I, I, I was thinking about SFEA and our employees' association. I, I believe that we should always offer a little bit of latitude when they're speaking and not limit them, because it isn't like public comment. They work within the district, and they do provide us with good information as a board. And so as long as we allow them, give them the latitude and respect they need, because some months, there may be very little to share, and then other months, much more. And so I guess it almost works out as an average, I guess, in the final analysis, you know, what that looks like. So.
Yeah, I, and, and I've heard a lot of talk about that now. I don't, my, my sense on those two items is that we, I don't think we have a problem we have to solve, and if we do, we can bring it back up. But I think, excuse me, I bumped into the, I think that the, my, my thinking is if we're going to worry about that before there's a problem, I don't know that we have a problem we're trying to solve that. So
Oh, okay.
You know, we had put in a five to seven minute target. I don't anticipate that the, that that's going to generate a lot of consternation from them, and I didn't intend to run a stopwatch. So if
Oh, okay.
that they're running 20 minutes, month after month, maybe
Oh.
and if we find that they're running five to seven as our target, then I think we're all happy.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so here's, I'll share my own thoughts on this, you know, as far as the document. We did spend the time, as Jennifer said, talking about it. This was our chance to really go through it item by item. You've all had access to it since Wednesday, I think. So, and on top of all of that, it would be really useful to me that this would be the way we set our agenda for February's regular meeting, right? That would be helpful because it feels like we're a lot of momentum on this. I'd be perfectly fine voting on it. And I, I think if I was to summarize, there were five that were fine with voting on it, several that said they'd be okay waiting if that was the preference.
Yeah.
So if, if I'm reading the board, what I guess I'm saying is, if somebody wants to move that we approve it, I'm certainly open to that. And if that motion passes, then so be it. And if we don't have a motion, then we'll, you know, delay this to another meeting, probably February's regular meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we don't pass this agenda item at the moment and move it to next month.
So moved?
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion that you'd like to have before we call the vote on this? Okay, the motion on the floor is to table this item to the next meeting. Did I have that accurate, Shelley?
Yes, you did. Thank you, Jonathan.
And Debbie, would you go ahead and call the vote, please?
Yes, Jonathan?
I'm voting no.
Jennifer?
No.
Erv? Thumbs up, thumbs down?
No.
Shelley?
Yes.
Janet?
I'll vote yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
That's four to three, motion fails.
Thank you. I'm assuming, having seen it fail, that somebody is hoping to make a motion to approve the document that we've modified tonight. So I guess I'll wait and hear if that happens now.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yeah, I move that we approve the, I guess, the new, the new general and template.
Okay, so moved, and I'm going to, I'm going to add to it as we've modified it collectively tonight.
Yes, thank you. Then I second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on this before we call the vote?
Yeah, I just got a quick one. I, you know, I, I mentioned that I'm okay waiting to the next meeting. And then I guess I was swayed by Jennifer's comment saying that we can, we can adjust it at any time if we feel, and so, you know, I was kind of on the fence, and I was swayed by that argument. And we have a lot of things going on in the district. We have a lot of other policies we need to review. So I say, you know, I'm for accepting this one and moving on to other business. Thank you.
I have a question. So if we can amend this at any time, what's the process to do that?
Um, if we can amend it at any time, I guess the process at that point is we'd have to get it added back to the agenda as a discussion item.
There you go.
So I'm, I'm, so this is the conundrum. So if, you know, the next board meeting, I say, for a future agenda item, I'd like to add the general agenda order of business template, and it's got to get approved by Jonathan, Jennifer, Dan, and Scott, and you guys say it's not important in your meeting, and it doesn't get put on the agenda to discuss, then how do I get my voice heard? Or is it just shut down?
Well, I, I don't think it shut down, because we
Okay.
had a chance to share your thoughts tonight. I think that really what likely would happen is that the intent is that this is approved annually, to be honest, right? So
Yeah, July. It's supposed to be approved in July.
Correct, and I would anticipate it would be approved in July of this year, again, reapproved. Okay, that would seem to me to be the right time to bring up the recommended changes. If four people on the board or more agree that it's accurate as is, I don't anticipate any compelling reason to revisit it, short of what I'll call widespread agreement among many board members, in the meantime, right? Because of the odds are not significantly high, that if they're approving it tonight, they're going to agree that we should change it in a month, right?
Yeah, so really, there's, so what Jennifer said, there's really no reason to, there's no way to change it in the future or amend it.
Well, there is, and I think annually, it would be reapproved, so I would consider that to be in the future.
I see. Okay, got it. Thank you.
I, I, I know, I, I hear what Ms. Nealan's saying, and, and that's the only thing that sometimes we approve something, and then we have the opportunity of changing it down in the future, but then what does that look like? And will it, could it be potentially changed depending on the request? That's why I like to give it a little time, just so we can make sure that it looks solid, it looks good, approve it, and then roll with it. But, that's all.
Thanks, Lori.
Yes.
Jennifer?
To me, I really would like to get this approved before the next meeting, because I believe that the future agenda items piece is really important. And if we approve it during this meeting, we can use it at the next meeting. So I, I'm really, that, that, to me, that's what's really important. Also, in our training, Steve Kelly asked, does Steve Kelly asked, does a superintendent have the invitation to step up and say, well, let's not spend our time here? Right now, with the reopening, I just think that having this template is going to support our superintendent in, because everybody knows what to expect. And therefore, we're gonna build trust and hopefully not spend time on things that were misunderstandings or otherwise, you know, not positive things that, that were a result of not having things clarified.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other discussion, any new thoughts on this before we call the vote?
So I'll just disagree with Jennifer that this is building trust. That's all I'm going to say.
All right, Debbie, would you go ahead and call the vote?
Yes.
To approve the agenda, the general agenda order of business template as modified tonight.
Jonathan?
I vote yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Shelley?
No.
Janet?
No.
Erv?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
And Lori?
No.
That's four to three, the motion passes.
All right. Well, thanks, everybody. I appreciate it. The, well, I guess that was all right. So that was our only discussion item for tonight. So unless there's any objection, we, oh, yes, Jennifer.
Yeah, I do. We, this is not something that we talked about, but if you are paying attention to the the evaluation superintendent timeline, we have timeframes coming up. And so I just thought I would draw board members' attention to that. I can share my screen if you want.
This isn't on the agenda. I don't feel comfortable doing this. Do you need to amend the agenda to add this topic?
Yeah, we might need to.
Is, have, I mean, are you adjourning or are you making a motion to amend the agenda, Jennifer, to add this topic?
Well, that's a good point. I don't think we have to because I just kind of made the announcement anyway. People should just heads up, heads up on superintendent evaluation.
Well, everybody can have a heads up about something. So I really think that if you wanted to talk about this topic, you needed to amend the agenda. So anybody
That's probably right.
Yeah.
That's probably right.
Yeah. So I don't feel comfortable listening to, to, to your heads up. So if you'd like to amend the agenda, I mean, feel free. We can take a vote on it and then listen to what you have to say. But other than that, I don't feel comfortable with this.
Fair enough. And I was about to adjourn. So I think with that, unless there's I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you.